To the nature of the business types that are going to be in this development, we're asking for a reduction of stalls with a total of 4,542. Aerial pictures have been proposed. Proposed 4,542 stalls will be more than adequate for this Washington City development. Staff has no concerns with with these parking modifications being made. Staff has spent a good amount of time working with the applicant to bring this project forward. At this time, a development agreement will be provided, proposed to the city council in conjunction with this zone change request. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash 20. On to the city council and based on the following findings and conditions as stated in the report. And we can review these slides here. This is a good outline of the development. This is the boundary, the legal description of all the land that the development will fall in. So rather than scroll through, I think the original packet had fifty some odd pages in it. The next couple of slides are going to focus on these phase one and two buildings. The neat thing about this project is that we we know what all of the buildings are going to look like. So after looking at these few images here, that's going to be the remaining of the the development that will follow suit. So these first two buildings, you can see where they're located to kind of orient yourself around those there. This view is looking east towards the Southern Parkway between buildings 102 and I think 110. These red dots highlight where these entrances into the development will be. Here's the proposed parking broke broken down here comparing the West Valley. Project that it was compared to. This is the West Valley numbers. And here's what's being proposed in our project. We've got the square footage of roughly 4.6 million square feet of building space. The proposed 4,542 parking stalls. That's on average, one parking space per 1,023 square foot of building. At this time, I I have a there's a two minute video clip. I think it would be good to play if you commissioners don't mind. We can just run through that real quick, kind of highlights the project.
Yep, that'd be good. This is a public hearing also, so we'll go through the video. Then we'll have a chance to talk amongst commissioners and then we can open it up to public hearing. Anything else, Eldon?
No, as you can see, it's a very well designed, thought out, great project. We're excited to see this move forward and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have for me.
Okay, I'll open it up to the commissioners for discussion. One comment is a lot of these pictures or graphs were from a project that was completed up in West Valley City, up by Salt Lake City. So they're not new to the game. They know what they're doing. They they do a lot of these projects and anyway. Any comments or questions?
Um, I this is Commissioner Tupow. Um, I had a I had thought that we were putting shopping centers or something like that, but that looks like distribution centers, so.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be I want I two uses, maybe with some little bit of commercial mixed in.
Yeah. Did we um, did we finish? Does this project include the road that connects it to Washington? Was that figured out? So are we?
Yeah, that's that's underway. The utilities are in that road. If you drive down there, you'll see where it's gone, cut through the mountain over there. And it's they're they're making some pretty big headway.
You referring to ownership and and working that out with the road?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we did the alternate route or if we if we got cooperation from St. George.
Uh, from what I understand, St. George was cooperative and it it came with both sides.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So this Commissioner Mitchell, to go along with the roads, so the exit coming off the Parkway, is that part of this project or will it be part of the previous project? Make it doing the on ramp to the Parkway that's not there currently, correct?
Yes, I understand this development will bring their side of the on off ramps. John, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's that's what I understand, just on the west side, the on off ramps.
That's that's the correct understanding. In your packet, you'll notice there's still a an indication that the development agreement isn't complete, which it is not, it will be. But the development agreement addresses some of the elements will be done there and and the applicant will build out and complete the east side, strike that the west side of the interchange at that location and through their contacts and correlation with other landowners may actually have all of it completed at the same time. And 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 there may be a way that they can allocate those those expenses and take care of that so it all gets completed at once.
Thank you.
So if we if we approve this and we're changing it to a PUD or or we just change it to a PUD zone? I mean, it doesn't. Right, but I mean, this will be the last we see of this project here, right? We don't have to come in for each building after this.
Correct. So so your your meeting tonight is just to recommend to the city council, if the city council approves it at their meeting. If the PUDs, if the PUD doesn't get amended or altered, they essentially submit to staff, staff reviews according to the plan. And staff approves.
That that's that was that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I don't looking through this, I don't know if there's going to be any mezzanines or anything like that in these buildings. It didn't it doesn't show, but would that be something they'd have to come back and amend the PUDs for if they decide to put a mezzanine in these buildings?
Are you talking an interior mezzanine? I know that these buildings are planned and constructed so that so that the potential tenants and occupants can occupy office, you know, industrial, whatever in there. And so the answer is the city won't take a administrative interest in the interior, although they they would, you know, need to inspect and.
Right, but I'm saying it won't have to come back to us for a mezzanine. That's what I wanted to make sure of because I didn't see anything. I just wanted to make sure that we were giving them that option before they had to come back.
Correct, so legislative approvals aren't required for the buildings, but there will be administrative, you know, inspections and all.
So this is a public hearing as we stated. I'll open the public hearing if there's anybody in in the congregation that'd like to get up and make some comments. Or we'd invite this the applicant to come up also if he'd like to. State your name, tell us who you are and what you're doing.
My name is Don Bean. I'm a resident of Washington City and I am in favor of the zone change. I think it'd be a great benefit to the city and to all of its residents. And I think it's a great thing that they're coming here and have chosen Washington City and I hope you support that. Thanks.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say anything or are we happy?
We don't have anything to add. We're super excited to be here. If you have any questions about the project, happy to answer any of those, but I think Eldon did a great job of illustrating what we've got going on. And it hasn't been a secret, right? We've been coming for a long time, so any questions, I'm happy to answer them though.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks for your comments. Any other comments? With that, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the commissioners to make a motion or more comments.
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Z dash 23 dash 10. A request to rezone approximately 276.68 acres located approximately on the east side of St. George Airport and to the west of Southern Parkway, Highway seven, from the current general commercial C three zoning to a proposed planned unit development, commercial PDC zoning designation. The two findings and 11 conditions as outlined by staff. And noting on condition 11 that the development agreement is supposed to be done before city council leaves.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Bullock, all in favor individually. Anderson?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tupow?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And Sheil, I'm an eye also. The motion passes unanimously and will move forward to the city council for their approval or look at it.
Could I add one comment on that?
Yep, yep, sorry.
For those of you that are following this, we're it's not going to go the following week. We're shooting for the November eighth meeting. This will drop for city council, but stay tuned and keep an eye out on the city's website for the exact date.
Okay. Got note of that, I guess we're happy. Okay, we'll move forward. Item number five A on the agenda is an amended final plat approval for Homestead at Stewki Farms, phase four lots 29 and 30, located at 4885 South Homestead Way. The applicant is Caleb Judkins, the owner is Caleb Judkins. And the instant, well, I don't need to go into all that. We'll just turn some time over to Eldon, staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Protim. The reason for this amendment is to combine lots 29 and 30 so that no lot line exists between the two lots. No other changes are being. To the planned community development zoning of this development. Subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the Homesteads at Stewki Farms, phase four lots 29 and 30. Partial amendment combining lots 29 and 30. And that's on to the city council based on the following findings and conditions as stated in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you. This too is a public hearing, so we'll discuss again amongst us and then we'll open up the public hearing. So any comments or questions? Okay, with a public hearing, we'll open that now. Is there anybody in the congregation that would like to make comments? Is the applicant here? They want to say anything?
Caleb Judkins, the applicant, and we're just looking to combine these two lots to make a slightly larger yard for our kids. So appreciate the approval and we think it'll be beneficial to the neighborhood as well, raising profitability.
So we're gonna have gym set and everything there we have to come down and play with, right?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the comments for this evening? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, open her back up to commissioners for further discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
This Commissioner Bullock. I move to recommend approval of the Homestead at Stewki Farms Lot Phase Four Lots 29 and 30, combining lots 29 and 30 and pass it on to city council with the. And five conditions.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Bullock and a second by Commissioner Tupow. All in favor individually? Anderson?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tupow?
Aye.
Uh, Mitchell?
Aye.
And I'm Sheil, I'm an eye, the motion passes unanimous and it will. Does does that that doesn't go to the city council, correct? Or does it?
It does.
Okay, that goes city council. I didn't see that. I read that. Okay, that goes to city council, I didn't see that, I read that in there, but anyway, there you go, onward and upward. Item number 6A is a public hearing also, for consideration and recommendation to city council, conditional use permit C dash 23 dash 12 for a proposed gas station and RV park located at approximately 4395 East Telegraph Street. Applicant is Rosenberg and Associates. I'll turn it over to Eldon and staff for comments.
Thank you, commissioners. Zoning regulations require new development that's adjacent to Telegraph Road to obtain conditional use permit approval. The applicant is proposing a 5,100 square foot convenience store and an additional 1750 square feet of dining area inside of the convenience store for a combined square footage of 6,850. The fuel pumps are to the south of the convenience store and there are seven of these gas pump stations. The RV park is just north of Razor Ridge Pond and consists of 56 pad sites and a clubhouse. The clubhouse is on the main floor and consists of 1,482 square feet. The upper floor of the clubhouse is 1,378 square feet and consists of a living quarters for an onsite manager to reside in. The building elevations and finishes, as shown in the exhibit, for the gas station and RV park are aesthetically pleasing. The area between the gas station and RV park is being improved with a 39-foot private drive that will bring three future commercial uses, which will need conditional use permit approval prior to beginning construction. As shown on the proposed plan, the 39-foot private drive will include three ingress, egress points, two of which are onto Telegraph, and one is onto Razor Ridge Drive. The applicant is planning to connect these access points in this first phase. The parcel is zoned, planned community development, commercial. The zoning to the north, east, and south is Hurricane City and planned community development to the west, which is Washington City. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the standards as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C dash 23 dash 12, allowing for a convenience store, gas station, gas pumps, dining area, and a recreation vehicle park to be located at 4395 East Telegraph, and that's on to city council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions in your report. There's a few slides here that we can skim through, discuss the project. All the, is being presented to you tonight is the areas in dark gray. The wider areas will be future and need to go through the same process that we're doing tonight. I do want to note, there's a block wall shown on this plan. It starts along Telegraph on the east side of the RV park and is to the north of the pond and then all along Razor Ridge Drive. So, so the whole west and kind of south end of that RV park will be secluded behind a block wall.
Will you show your cursor where that's going?
So starting right here on this inlet into the development, it's going to wrap around to the north side of the pond and then follow all the way up Razor Ridge Drive. And in fact, will cut in front of the, the future hotel that they have listed on here and will die in between the, the two parcels there.
Is that a six-foot block wall?
It is. There's also a 10-foot trail that is being shown on the plan, it's going to connect into the existing trail, wrap around the north side of the pond, and then that 10-foot trail will continue north on Razor Ridge Drive and stub out for future connectivity as well.
So timeout, on the, on the left side of Razor Ridge, there's some dotted, like buildings, what are those? Is that?
These here's?
No, go the left side, on the other side, keep moving, right there, what's that? What are those?
Those are existing structures, buildings.
So they're, they're residential lots?
Yeah, not, not included with this.
Right, but they, they are, is there homes on it?
Is that developed?
There are homes.
Aren't those all vacation rentals up in there?
Yeah, those are existing residential units, there is a vacation or a short-term rental overlay, and so most of them, as I understand, are owned and operated for, you know, kind of nightly rental type uses.
Okay.
Thanks, you'll see it right there.
So six-foot block wall, starting roughly here, wrapping all the way around the pond, continuing north, the Razor Ridge Drive, back east, and the block walls roughly stop here. Same with the trail here, 10-foot trail running north and south along Razor Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
This is a grading plan. This digs into the landscaping, you can see it's heavily landscaped. Trees, bushes, gravel, no grass areas. Again, more specifics on the landscaping. This is up by the gas station on the corner of Telegraph and SR9. Landscaping near the RV park. Here's the elevation of the clubhouse and onsite management that will live in the upper floor, you can see it's a well-dressed building. The floor plan for the main level, the living quarters on the second floor. And lastly, the gas station elevations, the north and south, variety of product, again, well, well-dressed. And then the east and west elevations. And that, one more view. That concludes my staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it up to commissioners for discussion.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I'm just curious, is there gonna be any egress onto State Highway 9, or the only egress is coming off of Telegraph? Or entrance and egress?
It's off of Telegraph, there's two on to Telegraph and one proposed one onto Razor Ridge Drive.
And then the third one, yeah, on Razor Ridge.
We do have, I don't know if all you saw the online response we received? And they basically talked about, like, I mean, they're concerned about the Rachel Ridge access into the development, and they're concerned about possibly with how many people come and go on RV parks, possibly trying to break into their swimming pools and things like that. So it, you know, it just brings riffraff sometimes, but.
That's also, that's also a vacation rental area right there, too.
That's true.
So, I mean, it's perfect. It's perfect, I, I think it's a really great spot to put this, to be honest. I wish they had a little more grass, I realize they don't have any. I wish they had a little, people that come with their RVs usually have their dogs and stuff, and so walk their dogs would be, probably makes sense to have a little bit of grass there so they don't go over into the other subdivision, but that's my opinion, that would be my only concern.
By one of our RV parks in Exit 13, we believe some of the occupants have built a, with, just with shovels and hands, a dirt bike trail down some of our desert hill open spaces, and so mostly folks come here to stay and then go play, but occasionally there are some that just come and stay and need something to do, but for the most part, we, we keep, we keep aware and monitor those things.
I've pulled up an area that they are going to put artificial turf in, so they, I, I believe they are planning to accommodate for pets in the artificial turf.
Yeah, that's, that was my only, that was my only concern, so that they don't.
You can see my mouse hovering over that artificial turf area.
Is that they can run over and go onto the neighbors.
Okay, that will open up the public hearing and invite anybody to come up and, and talk, and also the applicant, if they're here, if they'd like to come up. Being pretty quiet, we will close the public hearing and go back to commissioners to see if you have any other comments or look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I have a question for, for the engineer, if he's here. Online, okay.
I'm here, yeah, I'm online.
My question, so the city engineer recommended that we add as a condition that the secondary access be completed in Phase 1, where is the secondary access gonna be on here? Which one, which are the entrances?
So both of the entrances along Telegraph will be completed, I think what the engineer was referring to would be the entrance along Razor Ridge Drive. It's kind of off from the development, but, sorry, no, I'm sorry, there'll be three entrances will be constructed with this development, one on Razor Ridge and two along Telegraph, so I think Paul was referring to an additional entrance along Razor Ridge on the north end, kind of just south of where the, the future hotel would be at. Isn't right, Eldon, I don't recall that, that comment.
That sounds correct, yes, thanks, Jared.
Did you understand?
Where would it go to, though, if it's on the north end, I mean, where is it?
Kind of sketched in.
Where is it tying into?
Right, but there's no development from that area to the gas station right now, so.
Or the horizontal road that, that ties in from up top across?
Exactly.
It's like gravel or whatever, for the time being, or whatever they want? Yeah, we have quite a few. And it looks like, I'm assuming from the drawing here, it looks like we got right-in turn lanes on both of those, it looks like, am I correct?
Yeah, there's a deceleration lane on, on both of the entrances on Telegraph.
The, where's the storm drain located on, on this? What are we doing for LID?
Well, a couple of things, most of the site has a lot of clay, so we won't be doing any sort of retention. Any storm drain would be, would, would outfall close to the pond out there along Telegraph, that's the low point of the development, so everything will, would likely have some, some sheet flow across the development and then outfalling onto Telegraph.
I guess one other question, this is Commissioner Anderson, again, are there any amenities planned at all with, with the, the RV park, or just, just the trees shown on the landscaping plan?
There is the clubhouse, there should be some activities there, and then just the landscaping is on from there with, Steve is, who's the architect, is there, I don't know, he might have some more insight on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Steve Beasley from Desert Edge Architecture also representing our applicant, so the intent is that that area just north of here is gonna be another development, which will include additional amenities, those haven't been determined yet, but there's probably gonna be a pool, playground area, stuff like that, but the only amenity space is the dog park with this one and the clubhouse.
Would those, if, future amenities, would they be accessible to the, to the RV park or no?
The intent is they're gonna be shared. Does the acceleration, deceleration go all the way through both entrances? Like, would it continue all the way through? Or does it start and stop in between?
No, so the way it works out, it's just a decel lane, so it's only north of the entrances, and then once you're at the entrance, it stops, there is an, an acceleration lane, it's just a deceleration lane. Sorry, does that make sense?
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve, to recommend approval of, does this conditional, does this go to city council or no? It does. Make a motion to recommend approval of C dash 23 dash 12, request for conditional use permit for a gas station and recreation vehicle park located at approximately 4395 East Telegraph, with the four findings and 12 conditions as outlined by staff.
Oh, I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson and a second by Commissioner Tupoe. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Bullock? Tupoe? And Mitchell?
Aye.
And I'm Sheel, I'm an aye, and motion passes unanimously and will move forward to the city council for there. Item number 6B is also a public hearing, that's for a request for a conditional use permit for a wellness spa located at Cotton Town Village Lot 2. It is item number, or conditional use permit number C dash 23 dash 13. And the applicant is Kathy Joel Staley and civil service. I'll turn over some time to staff and Eldon for comments.
Thank you, commissioners. Zoning regulations require commercial buildings over 5,000 square feet to obtain a, an approved conditional use permit. The proposed wellness center is 5,870 square feet and will provide lodging and resort, resort-style treatments for an eight-guest room facility. The owner will reside onsite in a separate living area. The wellness center will provide all meals via an onsite kitchen. The lower level consists of a yoga room, steam room, and additional therapy rooms. These amenities are only for guests staying in the center and are not open or offered to the general public. The average guest stay ranges from seven to 21 days. Guests typically arrive via the airport and pickup-dropoff transportation is provided by the center. With the owner living onsite, a covered parking stall will be provided and is shown on the plan. The applicant is also asking for setback relief on both side yards. The applicant is also asking for setback relief on both side yards. Under the commercial mixed-use development standards, side setbacks are specified at ten feet. The applicant is showing the south side property line at eight point seven-three feet and, excuse me, the north side property line at five feet. If the applicant is able to satisfy the fire and building code standards, staff feels comfortable with the proposed setbacks. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the standards as outlined in the general plan and zoning ordinance. The building elevations and finishes are aesthetically pleasing and appears that this development will be a welcomed addition to the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C dash twenty-three dash thirteen, allowing for a wellness center to be built at Cotton Town Village Lot Two subdivision, and that's on to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as shown in the report. There's a few slides here that we can review. Here's the site plan. The detailed landscape plan. The entire site will be landscaped, trees, and covered gravel, shrubbery. Elevations.
So this is a new build, correct?
It is a new build. And then lastly, building elevation specifics, going with the lighter tones, dark roof. Be a be a good looking building to add into the cotton mill subdivision. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So this is like the northwest corner of that Cotton Town Village, like kind of back north towards the residential.
I'll pull it up here and show you exactly where it's going. On that highlighted lot is Lot Two.
So is there more than a typical driveway? Is there going to be parking?
It's it's a shared parking. Um, this site is accommodating all the parking that this site will need. Um, and the covered parking as well for the onsite management.
Garage are just covered?
Uh, just covered is what they're proposing.
Eldon, can you point out again the setbacks that were being requested or the easement?
So this north property is showing a five foot setback. And then the south is they're asking for one just over a foot relief there, one point two-five feet approximately on the south side.
So I don't I don't know where you park it. That's kind of my concern.
What I'm looking for is where they're parking.
So the parking.
That park is right there to the right, right? Is that additional new parking?
So is that parking for all Cotton Village?
That's parking for this.
For that unit.
Conditional use permit.
For this particular property.
Correct. It'll be.
Okay.
Improved parking.
Okay.
Yes, this conditional use permit is bringing this parking with it.
So will that be, I'm trying to visualize what, because some of them, there's like gravel down there, but this would be asphalt or concrete?
Hard surfaced.
Hard surface, okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing to the congregation. Sorry, did I did I scare you out there? Looked like I had a few of you jump. Anyway, uh, we're going to open that up. And if the applicant's here, if they'd like to come up and and make comments, we'd invite that.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Joe Staley, and I appreciate your um, suggestions or questions if you have any. I'm happy to answer them. And I don't have anything to say outside of answering questions that you have. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming up. Anybody else like to make comments? Okay, we'll close this public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners for further comments or a motion.
Commissioner Tupow, I make a motion to recommend approval of C dash twenty-three dash thirteen, allowing for a wellness center to be built at Cotton Town Village Lot Two subdivision on to the city council based on the following four findings and seven conditions.
Ten.
Or ten conditions, excuse me.
Commissioner Anderson, a second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tupow, a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Tupow.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
And I'm Shil, and I'm also an aye. Motion passes unanimously and will be recommended to the city council. Moving on. We have another public hearing. Uh, it's a final plat approval for the Cotton Mill Two subdivision located approximately seven hundred west Telegraph. Uh, Lot Six Minor Subdivision, uh, I guess that's we've all gone through that. The applicant is Progress Square Partners Limited and D C Cotton Mill. We'll turn it over to staff, uh, Eldon for your review.
Thank you, commissioners. Just to wrap your head around where we're at for this one, Best Buy, Red Robin there is what we're discussing. And I'll switch over to the plat. You can kind of orient yourselves. The applicant is asking to split the current eighteen point three-seven acres into six parcels. The current zoning at this location is C two with open space to the north and C two to the east, south, and west. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal, and the proposed Cotton Mill Two subdivision conforms to the standards as set forth in the zoning regulations and subdivision ordinances of the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Cotton Mill Two subdivision on to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as stated in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So this Commissioner Anderson, so what exactly, you said this is where Best Buy and Red Robin are?
So it's what, say that again?
So this is a current development?
Is this a current development that's getting split? Or is there any way to overlay the zoning map with with the Google maps? We can see what we're doing here.
I'll help try to orient us here. Here's the inlet coming in seven hundred west. Now let's follow that on to this map, seven hundred west.
So it's just that parking area, is that correct?
Does it include the buildings too?
It it's the entire site, eighteen point.
So.
What are we? What are each of those buildings in? The big one is Best Buy, right? Or Coles? You zoom in a little bit. Which one is?
I don't I don't think Best Buy is involved in it.
All all of these buildings are involved. It it's.
All the buildings are involved?
Yeah, but Best Buy is that way.
Best Buy is the other one you keep.
Coles are like a nutrition.
There's the current Cotton Mill Two subdivision. You can see this outline. So we're breaking this down.
That's where Natural Grocers is, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Red Robin on the corner. We're breaking this down into six subdivision is what the owner wants to do. They can sell if they would like. Typically, that's why people break parcels off is to sell them.
Yeah.
It's everything is existing, roadways in place, utilities, nothing's changing other than we're subdividing this.
So how many parcels are they looking for?
Six.
Six.
So potentially, the buildings could be, I guess this is separated, and then you can six individuals. Do do the do these new lines go through the building? Obviously, they do.
Some of the buildings will stay jointed, others will separate out. And you can see where those lines fall here on the on the parcel.
So this Commissioner Anderson, so you're, so Lot Two would be Joanne's and Natural Grocers. Lot Four would be Coles and Ross. Lot Five would be Lot Five would be Ross and whatever else is over there, I guess. And then Lot Through Three, Lot Three, I guess, would be Red Robin, right?
Correct.
And then the bank would be Lot One. So.
Lot Six.
And then the parking lots just stay as like common area, I assume?
Yeah, parking shared shared access, common agreement.
That makes more sense.
From all of them with utilities.
I was thinking the parking lots were splitting into Lots Two.
Well, the parking's still going to go with Coles, right?
There there's shared agreements for the parking. Um, so they can't claim parking for one site. It's it's all shared shared parking through there.
Who who's in charge of maintenance on it? Wouldn't this be in like a, I'm thinking it's going to have have to have like an HOA type of thing, right?
Some sort of association that pays taxes on the parking lots.
With a can fee. But uh, somebody's got to take ownership on that and be responsible for it. So is that the Coles building? It looks to me.
There there'll be an owner for each parcel, and each parcel's owner will be responsible for their land upkeep. Um, if if they want to create an agreement, a maintenance agreement between all owners, they're happy to do so. And and that would satisfy our requirements.
They'd have to, because you got the entire parking lot is owned commonly and the roads.
Is this Coles right here?
No. Well, Coles is Lot Four.
Yeah, and they they include this.
That's not. No, the everything in the middle is common area. All the parking lots are like common, and the roads are common. Lots are the buildings up top, except for Red Robin. It has its own parking, it looks like.
Seems like the way it's drawn in that it does include the parking lot.
Yeah, it does. Maybe it does.
I'd like to clarify that the the.
The parking lots are included.
Are included down here.
So is the applicant here?
That makes more sense.
So what about the streets? They are they're just responsible for the streets that fall on their land, I guess?
Why don't why don't we pull the applicant up? He can explain that to us. I'll open this up for public comments and invite the applicant to come up and and kind of answer our questions. Thank you. Well, you you pay a can fee for all that. Thank you.
Hi, commissioners. I'm Ryan Lay. I'm with Bush and Gudgel, or the engineers that are helping through this process.
So I think our our question is, is how how the division lines come in. Coles uh, is one big happy building, and it comes all the way down, includes a lot of the parking lot. Is that correct? Is that how we're reading it?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then the other properties, uh, this one here, Lot Two, who is that? Natural Grocers and Joanna. Okay, and so that's that's a double tenant building with this parking, correct?
But I mean, yes, that that area is included in there in the land in that lot.
Right here.
Yes, that's a separate lot.
Okay, so you got a lot here that comes down, a lot here that comes down, a lot here that comes all the way down, correct?
Yep.
And Lot Here. And they will have an association, HOA or whatever.
Yeah, there's shared part part, shared access and parking agreements that are all in place and have been in place for years between the businesses.
And they'll participate in their common area fees, so they'll have a management there.
So will that take care of this commissioner? Will that take care of, uh, my only question is what what if you get potholes and like the main entrance road coming through here that's owned by Lot Two, and he doesn't want to fix the road? I mean, is that part of their mainstream that they they all have to jointly fix it?
That's all included in their their agreements.
That'll be in part of part of the HOA.
That'd be my only thing is like.
Yeah.
Something goes like, I'm not going to fix the road, then.
That makes sense.
And that's the main road.
Yeah, I believe that's all taken care of in their agreements between the the, I mean, at this point, it's all just one owner. But um, they've got all that laid out with their agreements.
Is that something that we need to look at and make sure that it's outlined correctly? So we're not going to have a future issue with?
I I worry that, I mean, nor normally, like if this were a normal subdivision, like the the streets would get like dedicated out to the city, or they'd be dedicated to the HOA or whatever. And there'd be like a common entity that would own the streets and take care of maintenance. Where this crosses multiple private land to get access to these buildings, that's what I.
But but in their HOA, they're going to have language in there that talks about cross easements.
I know, but that's a whole lot harder to enforce than if if you actually have easements in place and stuff.
But they'll they'll vote amongst the ownership there who's going to be the president this year.
I know, but.
And there there are there are recorded easements.
Yeah, you've got to have recorded easements for all. That's all I'm saying. You got to make sure there's easements, because it doesn't matter if the HOA says do this or do that. If it's on somebody's land and there's no easement, you know?
Yeah, we went through all the utility easements and everything with staff. And and they made sure we put them on the, you know, the the utility easements and such on the plat.
I guess it does show that twenty-five foot.
That would be my only, that'd be my only concern is that we have proof that that the access, that the roadway easements are recorded. That's that's my concern.
So I guess.
And and that there's a recorded, you know, shared agreement that now that they're splitting apart, that it's still going to work, or that's been modified or whatever.
Is there a draft? This is Commissioner Tupow. Is there a draft of the maintenance agreement?
I I don't have one with me. I, um, but I'm I'm sure I could probably find one, yes. The staff will have the opportunity to look at the title report and and verify the easements. Yeah.
I agree, but.
What what's your concern, Commissioner? Maybe I can.
So I guess that'd be more your your thing to to check off, Eldon. I just. If if we were doing this like from the start, you know, and and those those roadways would either they would get easements and it'd either be dedicated to the city, or they'd be dedicated to a common entity like like an association or whatever. My concern is that where we're just splitting them and you've got, you know, access roads for each of these properties covering multiple property lines, and they're not owned by a a common entity, they're not owned by the city. I mean, it just seems like a can of worms unless you've got unless we've actually made sure those easements are in place and that there is a revised, uh, you know, agreement covering who who takes care of it. That that's my only concern. It's just a little unusual the way it's being broken up.
That's definitely a valid concern. We had those same concerns when we started this in our staff developer meeting. And Bush and Gudgel, they've tracked down those easements, placed them on the plat, and were assured that there's croc cross access easements for all of those properties.
So you've you've seen these easements?
So who then is responsible for?
Condition five, condition five. Condition five has a post maintenance agreement to be recorded before it's all said and done.
Right, but it's already been recorded. I'm just saying, it's going to have to possibly be modified.
Well, we're changing it, so it has to be re-recorded. So when it's re-recorded, they will put it in.
Is that something you're going to check on, Eldon? I mean, or or are they just going I mean, or are they just going to say, "Oh, we already have one in place"? No, I know that.
Condition 5 says it has to.
Or they say it's already been, because like if we're amending a final plat, it says that condition there as well, but they don't actually bring in a new set of CCNRs, they just say there's already one there. That's all I'm saying, is in practice, how does that get checked off?
Yeah, I've seen the easement numbers, they're in place. Staff has no concern that the cross-easements aren't there existing.
And there's a maintenance agreement in condition 5 for the whole subdivision, for the whole thing, so it should be okay.
Note 4, I'll read it. "There exists a shared parking and access ingress egress between the lots on this plat that can be used for the common use of each of the lots, more particularly shown in reciprocal easement agreement between Kohl's Department Stores Inc. and Cotton Mill 2 LLC, recorded on this date as entry." And then it goes in and lists all of those easements that do exist.
That's what I wanted to say. I guess my only thing would be then, just making sure that the agreement they have in place either works or that we get a new one, that's all. I just, I just want somebody to be thinking about that, is all. Which I guess would be you or...
Yeah, I think it's in there.
Okay, appreciate you coming up. Anything else you want to add?
I don't, unless you have any other questions for me, I'm good.
Is there any other comments in chamber anybody would like to make? So we'll close the public hearing and go back to commissioners for comments or a motion.
So condition 5 states that a post-maintenance agreement be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat? Who reviews that?
Well, that applies to our new developments. It's a standard we put on all the plats. This one's existing, it shouldn't apply, so as we're going through that checklist, we'll check that box off. In our standard process, Public Works, myself, and legal counsel check that when it does come through.
So, I think we're covered?
So is there any discussion as to how they abide and continue unity with all the buildings in color and style? Is there any discussion about that? Do we need to think about that?
That's based off of zoning, it's currently C-2.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yep. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm a good motion. Commissioner Tupou, I recommend approval of the final plat for the Cotton Mill 2 subdivision on to the city council with the two findings and five conditions in the staff report.
This, Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Tupou, a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Tupou.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
I'm Shil, I'm also an aye. We will pass this on to the city council unanimously and move forward. That's a wrap for tonight. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll move to adjourn.
Second that.
First and the second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the one owner...